Good evening. Welcome to the June 21 regular meeting of your Board of Commissioners. Appreciate all those who are in attendance tonight and those who are watching online and from their home. So, as you may know, we call every meeting to order with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Reverend Peter Dodge from the Reesville Alliance Church. Following his invocation, we'll ask Ms. Toni Reese, who is a retiring member from our Board of Elections, to come to the podium and offer the Pledge of Allegiance. All who are able, please stand.
Please lay your heads together with me. Father in heaven, the Psalmist prayed in the Scriptures for the nation of Israel, and we pray in a similar way for this boardroom tonight. Be gracious to us, O God, and cause your face to shine upon us, that we may know your ways on earth and throughout the land. We thank you this night for all the ways in which you have been good to us, Lord, that you've caused the sun and the rain to come in their times, and you cause fruit and grain to grow from the ground. You give life and health to our bodies. You give wisdom to our minds, and you have given us leaders whose hearts you guide like streams of water. You have established the men and women of this commission to do righteously and justly for the people, and we thank you for them. And we ask this evening, Lord, that you would fill these commissioners with wisdom and knowledge, strengthen them in their inner being, to govern us with mercy and to administrate with grace. Keep them from the many temptations that face public officials today, specifically of greed and power, and protect them from those who would seek to distract them or to take advantage of them. Give to them everyone a willing and compassionate heart to serve this community for the good of others and for your glory, O God. May truth prevail in this hall tonight. May virtue be practiced by all. May unity and harmony crown our heads this evening. May equity be our refrain. May our country and the people of it be ever vigilant to grow in Christian character. In the righteous name of our Father, and in the glorious name of His Son, and the powerful name of the Holy Ghost, we pray. Amen.
Standing Ms. Reese.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Prepared agenda that's been published for about a week now. Gentlemen, are there any updates or changes to our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to our agenda that we add to it first, under closed session, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, approval of closed session minutes, point A3, consult with an attorney, and A5, negotiating agents. I'd also like to add, under new business, 11A, Board of Elections item to accept and appropriate $105,64 for the purchase of election precinct and office equipment and materials. These items to be paid for by HAVA funds. And under item B, under new business, I would like to add an update on the LEMCO options. That would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? We have an approved agenda. Thank you. Well, tonight, we have a recognition, and to talk about that, we're going to let Teri Matthews, volunteer manager of hospice Rockingham County, please come up. Ms. Jennifer, if you will, hand her a microphone. Just if you will, just turn and face the audience as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teri Matthews, and I'm the volunteer and events manager from hospice of Rockingham County. I've been with hospice for about two and a half months, and during that time, I've had the opportunity to work with some of the best people in the world. Giving your time and talents to hospice allows you to change lives in the community for people who are at the end of life's journey and make things a lot better. So tonight, I want to recognize a very special volunteer. He did not know, Ken, that he was getting recognized, but during the pandemic, it has been very hard for hospice to get volunteers to come out and serve others, not because they didn't want to, but it just wasn't able to be done safely. But Ken was the last volunteer to stop volunteering, and he was the first one to come back to service of others. And so tonight, the hospice family would like to recognize Ken, and thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize him, because the work that you've done and continue to do for us is pretty darn amazing. Come on up, Ken. This is Ken Boss, and it would not be the volunteer manager unless I said, if you are interested in volunteering with hospice, just give me a call. We would love to have you, because, again, the work we get the opportunity to do is life-changing.
If you'd like for your family to come up, we'd be glad to take photographs to step around on the front, commissioners. If we will, let's go down to the front. We appreciate all that hospice does and all that you allow hospice to do through your volunteers and the other volunteers. So thank you very much. Yeah, come on across. Very good. In recognition of your service, the commissioners would like to give this to you as outstanding volunteer. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
And this will be just a little something you can carry with you whenever you travel throughout the state. Take a little bit of Rockingham County with you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Metzler, our county manager, will bring this item up. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I wanted for us to formally recognize Lee Cockrum for receiving the prestigious award for Economic Development Director of the Year. Lee was presented this award during the Economic Development Association Annual Meeting on June 9. This is an award for a very special person. Lee's done a fantastic job. I remember the first time we met her, Mark and I met her, and then...
Lee, please stand, come to the front real quick. I just want folks at home to be able to see you.
And then she was quite ready to come to Rockingham County, so I met with her again at one of the golf courses up there. We had lunch up there, and she decided this was the right time, so we're very glad to have Lee as our Economic Development Director, and she is the best in the state of North Carolina, and we're very pleased to have you. Since you've been here, you've done a great job for the county. You've looked out for us. You speak your mind, and you work hard, and you're very courteous to the people that we see, and so want to thank you for being the best you can. So thank you.
Come on around. I'd like to take pictures with you as well. Come on. You give us a hug. Yeah, we sprung this all the way so you didn't know what was happening tonight.
I want to cut a mark.
We'll find the mark if you like.
I don't know. Thank you. There you go. I appreciate it. Thanks, Lee.
I know, just keep flipping off. Put another sponsor on. Well, we work from a prepared agenda, and we also have a consent agenda, and consent agenda items are non-controversial items. However, if anyone has any questions about those items, you can contact Lance Metzler, our county manager, and he'll be glad to fill in on those details. That being said, item six is our consent agenda. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. This takes us to public comment. Let me see if we have anyone signed up again tonight. And yet again, we have no public comment tonight. So that will take us to our presentation. Tim Hall, Henry County Administrator, and Mark Heath, Henry County Economic Development Director, please come and make your presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Hall. Vice Chairman Berger, members of the commission, and my good friend Lance Metzler over here. And if it helps our case any, I live in the same neighborhood as Lee Cockrum, so maybe there's some carryover there. I don't know. We're here tonight to talk to you about the RACE FY 2021 grant opportunity that you see in front of you on the screen. I will go through part of this, and then the rest of our foursome will take a small piece. We will not take a lot of time, hopefully, and then we'll be here to answer your questions as we go. But I'm joined by Mark Heath, who's our Economic Development Director. I'm also joined by...
It's not on the screen yet. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I have to get IT to help. Let me get it. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. As I said, Mark Heath, our EDC director, is with me. Tim Pace, who's the Henry County engineer, is also with me, and David Guttermuth with Timman's group, who is the group that's working with us on this project, is with us as well. And each of them will have a small piece of this as we go forward. I'm going to just turn it over to David at this point. He's the technical person that we've hired, and he's going to walk you through the project that you see in front of you.
Good evening, everyone. Like the introduction, we've been brought on to represent Henry County and lead them through the process of the grant application and the engineering and technical development of this project. So just a quick history. This grant was originally brought in as the Tiger Grant. It evolved into what was later the Build Grant, and it has currently been defined as the RACE Grant under the current administration. The two major, I'll say, changes to this have been sustainability and environmental equity and social justice. So getting into it, there's a total allocation of $1 billion up for grabs across the entire country. Fifty percent of that allocation is dedicated to urban projects. Fifty percent of it is dedicated to rural projects, which this would identify as. And then for the rural projects, 100% of the funding is available to support those projects. No local match is required. The major priorities for the development and delivery of these grants is to ensure that there is a clear and significant regional or local economic benefit. It has to be justifiable to spend money on this, so the benefit has to outweigh the cost. And then it has to be met in a reasonable schedule to ensure a proper delivery of the project within the grant guidelines. So just a quick overview of the project. We're looking at doing an interchange improvement to support the regional and economic growth that the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center would produce on the state and county lines of North Carolina and Virginia, benefiting both of those parties. The major reason for the interchange as opposed to just traditional traffic or roadway improvements is the significant demand that the, I guess, the freight and the truck traffic is going to generate on the main line and the side roads. Obviously, the priority for this corridor is allowing the future accessibility to I-73 and the regional and multi-state connection that that produces. So on the screen here, everything that is displayed in green is what is going to be the proposed improvements of this project. Obviously, Commonwealth Crossing Business Center is up to the right of the screen, and all of the access points on and off of US 220 and the future US or I-73 would need to be improved to accommodate all of that truck traffic and the local traffic that would also be there to support these businesses and going through this area. This is a zoomed-in schematic of the layout, and just so that everyone understands, it's kind of a copy and paste, if you will, of the entire corridor. I think two miles south of here, maybe Smith Road, is an existing diamond interchange, which is what this is essentially replicating. It works well in this corridor. It reduces the environmental impacts, and it allows for a proper delivery, to get a grade-separated interchange, allow the main line to be maintained, and operationally, it functions very highly for this corridor. So we think we've explored a number of different alternatives, and this is the best project to be implemented for the future I-73 and the current US 220. This here is kind of like a local map. In the center of the screen, you have, in the circle, where the interchange project would be proposed. The yellow area highlighted at the top of the image is where the CCBC Park would be, and then for reference, Stoneville is down at the south of the screen or the bottom of the screen as a local town that would obviously benefit from this regional impact. So the main reason for this upgrade, obviously, is the significant truck and freight increase. When you're looking at close to 800% increase of daily truck traffic, you're going to experience significant delays, and that is going to operationally fail under the existing conditions. Also, given the daily truck traffic or that the employee car volumes are going to increase, we have to maintain the efficiency of the operation and allow for the future I-73 to be realized as a part of the USDOT I-73 corridor. Obviously, there's continued expansion that's going to occur over the next couple of years, and by the time these rates hit a level where these projects need to be implemented, we need to be sure that they're in place so that it successfully supports the growth of the business park and the long-term vision and plans of North Carolina and the USDOT. I'm going to turn a bit over.
Thank you, David. There are many benefits to Rockingham County and your communities in this project as they are to us. Safety is clearly a concern. We know that's going to be an issue as volume of traffic increases. Congestion, try to prevent congestion, which could be an issue as we move forward, and of course, the I-73 corridor, which we're all hopeful will expand north of the state line into Virginia. All these would benefit Rockingham County, but the real benefit is that these jobs know no residency requirement. Anybody can take these jobs. The entrance to the park is in North Carolina. We don't check IDs. If you want to work and qualify to work, you will have an opportunity to work at these companies. Regional benefits, you clearly, and I want to emphasize the one at the bottom. We have two companies in Commonwealth Crossing right now. One is Press Glass. That's a company from Poland that manufactures large sheets of windows for skyscrapers and hotels and that sort of thing. Their employment is at 140 folks. Forty-five of those, 140, live in North Carolina. We've also landed a new company in the last couple of months called Crown Holdings. If you have cans of beverages in your house, odds are that Crown makes those cans. They hope to hire 125 folks and do about a $45 million capital investment. We think they're going to be north of that capital investment. But for both of these companies, above-average wages, it's going to be a destination choice to work, and those jobs are open to Rockingham County, whatever county wants to come and drive that time to get there. Those residents will have an opportunity to do that. We need your folks, and we need them to help fulfill the job requirements at these companies. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Heath now, who's going to talk about commuting patterns and kind of show you where folks come from into our community.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This gives you a regional snapshot of where labor flows. We talked about this already, but companies really don't care about city, county, or state lines, and neither do employees. They want to go to where there's a good job, and you'll see that we're actually sending 52% of our residents outside of Henry County to work every day. We send you about 150 more folks every day than you send us, and that's the way it ought to be, the people going back and forth. And it really is a regional benefit, and labor, the labor shed is growing. We sell this part of North Carolina and Greensboro and Winston-Salem very heavily. We can even draw from those areas. So we can't, none of us can survive on the labor that we have in our own community. We have to share labor. We have to have people coming from here, and we send folks from you also. To look at where we are as a snapshot right now, this is a brochure of Commonwealth Crossing Track. We have two tracks have been developed. Press Glass is at the bottom of this image that you see, and also Track 4 is where Crown Corrigan Seal is building as we speak. This will allow, when these are up and fully operational, we'll have and currently have two additional sites. One is Track 1, which is 65 acres of graded pad, and there's an additional 80 acres there that we're working to have graded now. This can be one of the very few 145 to 150-acre rail sites in our part of the world, which is, they're very hard to find, and that's one of our goals. To the right of Track 1, to your left as you're looking at, would also be another 100-acre track that we call 3 for future development. So that's really what, we've got a great market today, but we're selling this every day, and we're getting a lot of traffic, just like Lee and your offices here, particularly on companies that are interested in rail-serve sites. To give you an idea of where we are, as has been said, Press Glass came in 2018, and you enjoy Press Glass operation, too. So we share even that company in our communities, which has been good for both of us. Crown Holdings announced in January, a very nice project to put a kind of a, to let you know what they're going to do. They will produce, if you can get your mind around this, it's hard for me, 5,800 cans a minute, 24/7. There's a huge backlog in the world of cans for beverages, and that's what they'll be doing there. So there'll be two-shift operation 24 hours a day. Currently, Press Glass has seven trucks coming in and out and 150 cars. We have a training center there that has three folks that are in and out every day, and when Crown is up and running, they'll have, day one, they'll have 55 trucks a day, tractor-trailer trucks, coming in and out. They bring their aluminum in on raw products on trucks, and it goes out. There'll be 125 cars, but even before that, today, if you go up there, it's very busy with construction traffic, construction labor. There's a lot going on, and we need to address those issues before they get ahead of us. So thanks.
Just to wrap up, and certainly we'll take whatever questions you wish to ask us. And I apologize for the typho on the screen. We wrote in Virginia vernacular where we talk about Board of Supervisors as opposed to commissioners, so we didn't do perfect work. We'll get graded down on that. But next steps, you have in your packet a resolution that we would ask for you to act on. We will make this same presentation to our Board of Supervisors tomorrow night, and we're hopeful that they will act on that as well. Part of this also is outreach to our various elected officials. I know Mr. Metzler has already been working on some of those letters of support for us should this go forward, and we would do the same thing on our side with our federal and state folks. The deadline to have this application filed is July 12. We would really like to have a draft done about a week prior to that in order for us to make sure it's exactly what it needs to say. So we would ask for action tonight on the resolution. We will take it to our governing body tomorrow for the same. We're hopeful that the project would start in early October with some environmental reviews and paperwork that needs to be done, and actual construction probably would start in 2023 or 2024. There is an entrance to the park currently. It is inadequate for what we expect to come, and we will make the best of that until this road is complete and we can really throw open the doors to economic development, not just for us, but for this community as well. So that is our presentation. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Gentlemen, do we have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
What utility services are provided to the Commonwealth Crossing at this point?
We have everything you could think of. We have an onsite AEP power station, about a $28 million onsite facility. We have water and sewer. We have my net, not my net, but internet service to the site. We've just begun the process to get natural gas to the site. And in Virginia, properties are ranked by tiers, and right now, we're a tier four out of five. Once we get the natural gas line in, we go to tier five, which is the highest level for the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. And being a tier five gets us in a different set of rooms when it comes to talking to clients, and I'm sure Lee could tell you the same thing. If you have all the utilities, you're good to go, and the one that we're lacking is gas, but it's on its way.
Can we take a five-minute recess, and I speak with Lee briefly?
That'll be fine. Gentlemen, we'll be in recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we are back in session. Gentlemen, are there any further questions? Let me ask a question, Mr. Hall. What kind of liability could the county or the taxpayers incur by the support of this resolution?
None. This will all be on our side. We just need, we want a joint application process, just because it shows regional cooperation, and we can dip into both sides of the federal house to help us with this. But the only cost to this county would be staff time, working with Mr. Metzler and Ms. Cockrum on some things, and then actually filing of the application. We will take care of that, but there could be some staff time involved.
Okay. Very good. I'll ask our county attorney. Do you concur with that?
Yes, Mr. Hall, I would also ask that legal, on our side, legal would review any forms and any documentation that would be going forward.
That's right. Yes, we'll share everything.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, our county manager's got lots of time, so we don't consider that a problem.
Appreciate that.
What sort of coordination have you done with North Carolina DOT regarding this?
That's what we will attempt to do through Mr. Metzler's office and directly with DOT. I know our two engineers are more closely aligned with those folks, so I'll let David address that.
Yes, so I meant to touch on this earlier, but we've already had advanced talks on the preliminary, I'll say, conceptual layouts that we've prepared, and NC DOT, and all of, we've had all of the meetings with all of the right people, the district traffic engineers. It's gone all the way down to the headquarters and the main office, and they've reviewed it and had an opportunity to provide some feedback. So all of those discussions and implementation has already moved in the right direction.
Good. Any further questions?
That's good.
At this time, we move to approve the resolution.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is Carrie Spencer, Community Development Consultant. Ms. Spencer?
Good evening, and thank you for being here. It's good to be here. The third of a three-county region, apparently. It's an interesting time to be here. I don't have a slide presentation for you, but as you know, the UD, our Unified Development Ordinance has been under revision in order to come into compliance with... Ordinance, has been under revision in order to come into compliance with 160D, as well as to a variety of things that this ordinance is going to do as it's changed is, one, A number one, is be a lot easier to use by the development community. The digital version of this ordinance is going to be, have cross-referenced live links within the ordinance. It's going to be a lot easier to use. We're going to change some of the ways that we consider lot size versus density, going to open up some avenues for major subdivisions in the RA District. It's going to treat a, create a mobile home district that will be a lot easier to manage and more in keeping with the demands that are here for that type of housing. We've been working on it as an advisory group. I know the consultant and I have been working hard on it recently. I'm grateful that it's had the time that it has had in order for us to get the land use plan where it needed to be, to get the UDO in line with that, and then to make sure that everybody is comfortable with the UDO and the revisions that are being made. So tonight, you're just being asked to, I don't know, we don't have a resolution, so we're asking you to acknowledge a memorandum that is basically saying that all development decisions are going to follow 160D from the 1st of July, since the ordinance won't be adopted at that point. And the new law goes into effect at the 1st of July, so this offers you a way to make sure that your ordinance at least complies.
An amendment to our current ordinance.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Berger. It will be a text amendment to the existing orders.
And so we're, and I apologize, because we've been talking about this a lot in the last few days. So this will be an amendment to add language to the ordinance that adopts 160D.
Right. Now, as we move forward adopting this new UDO.
Yep.
Do you see most business owners or landowners seeing large issues or problems with this? What is your anticipation?
Yeah, I don't. I think that the, our economic development and growth initiatives will be especially embracing of this ordinance. It gives the developer more flexibility to work within a varied housing market, a changing housing market. It gives the processes for the citizen and landowner are very clear in this ordinance. I feel like that will also be a positive.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, do we have any further questions for Carrie?
We do anticipate adopting the ordinance on July 19th. That's the plan right now.
This is just, this is a public hearing tonight. Is this a two-step public hearing, Mr. Manager?
This is a separate hearing, just to amend the existing ordinance, to add the language of 160D, and then a separate public hearing later in the month, later in July, to adopt the ordinance wholesale.
Go ahead, Commissioner Perdle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrie, I just want, maybe I should direct this to Lance. I just want to make sure that we are publicizing what we're doing throughout the county so that all of those interested parties will have an opportunity to have their voice heard, and that we make sure that we make this, when we get the final product, make sure it's available for review by members of the community on our website or whatever needs to be done to make it as completely transparent as possible.
Yes, sir.
That's my only comment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm going to ask our attorney to read this consistency statement for adopting NCGS 160D updates to our existing ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Consistency statement for adopting NCGS 160D updates to the existing ordinance. Adopting North Carolina General Statute 160D changes to the existing Rockingham County Unified Development Ordinance is consistent with the Rockingham County Vision Plan 2040. Furthermore, incorporating these changes prior to July 1, 2021, will bring the Rockingham County UDO in line with North Carolina General Statutes, enabling legislation regarding local land use planning and development. Further analysis of the revised UDO recommended for adoption by the Planning Board is necessary. However, all the required North Carolina General Statute 160D changes outlined in the memorandum and included in the draft revised UDO are necessary to continue to be responsive to the land use planning and development interests of Rockingham County.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen, with regards to that? Now, the motion that we need if we adopt this.
Should we close the hearing?
That's right. Thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner Berger. I do need to close the public hearing at this point. Thank you. And so we will close the public hearing. No one had signed up to speak with regards to that. So that being said, we would need a motion, and you, I thought I had some text for that. Do I have?
It would just be a motion to adopt the text amendment for the UDO.
Very good.
As cited in the memorandum.
Have that in front of you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Travis, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. That motion carries. And with that, we've got Pat Galloway, Director of Financial Services, up next. Good evening.
Good evening. Have I been well?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm asking you tonight to formally accept the $17,677,626 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that's been allocated.
Sorry.
It's been allocated to Rockingham County. Before we can request those, the first round of the funds to come to us, we need the board to formally accept these funds. We'll be appropriating these into a special revenue fund, and the use of them will be determined at a later date by the Board of Commissioners.
Very good. Gentlemen, any questions? Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Appreciate you being here tonight. With that, we have new business, and as those were amended, we'll open the floor to our county manager, Mr. Metzler. Item A, Board of Elections. Shall we let them present?
Sure.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Paula, as the Director of our Board of Elections, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. I come before you again tonight to ask for the approval of $100,564 for the purchase of election precinct and office equipment and materials. This money will actually be paid for out of the HAVA funds. The Board of Elections met last Tuesday, June the 15th, and approved this budget amendment unanimously, so now I seek your approval, hopefully tonight, so we can send this in to the Board of Elections, the State Board of Elections.
Very good. Thank you, Paula. Gentlemen, any questions?
I guess I have just one. Without going into any sort of detail, I don't need that about the exact office equipment, is there any impact on county-provided facilities by installation of whatever you're buying?
No, sir. These will actually be standalone equipment.
I move approval of the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Thank you, Commissioner Travis. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
With that, that takes us to Item B, update on the LME MCO. And Mr. Metzler, could you update us on the status of that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for the benefit of the audience, LME MCO is a local management entity, managed care organization. Basically, they help us with our foster care program and our adults' behavioral situations. So we had a meeting, we being a variety of folks, from the representatives from Health and Human Services Board, Mark and Reese were there, Department of Justice, the DA's Office, probation schools, Help Incorporated, DSS, Public Health, Law Enforcement, to meet with partners via Health and Sand Hill Center. And this is due basically because Cardinal and Via Health merged, and so it's our opportunity to look at what's available out there. We met, we gave each entity an hour and a half to present and have a Q and A at the end, and at the very end, we concluded that we wanted to open up discussions with Sand Hill Center. So the next steps for that would be for us to reach out to Sand Hill Center to set up a meeting with a smaller contingency from Rockingham County for Sand Hills, because they have to approve us. If the county decides to go with them, they have to approve us, as well as us seeking them. So that would be the next steps. I just want to make sure you guys were up to date. Mark, Reese, if I left out anything, please fill in.
Somebody might ask, Trillium, which is another LME MCO, has expressed an interest, as has Alliance. I would not recommend that we slow our process down to wait for them. There are some real obstacles with both of those that I think would make us unacceptable. And I believe we've reviewed the pertinent LME MCOs that we might want to consider. So if somebody had that question, we have looked at all of them, and these three seem to be the best fit. I think we would have a rating, but it is important that we ask some more questions before we commit to a single position.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I'd additionally like to thank you, Commissioner Richardson, and Commissioner Perdle, for the work you guys have done, as well as our manager, but it's just been a Herculean effort from staff members as well. Thank you very much. Any other business, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Very good. That takes us to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I know the last four or five days, all the events been going on in Rockingham County. I just want to say, I hope I can speak for most of residents in Rockingham County, but our hearts go out to the victims of a river accident. And I hope and pray that somehow or another, they can find some peace. But I personally would like to see, you know, some checks done, and I think we're working on some issues to work with Darba and other organizations to take a real close look at our rivers about safety issues. So with that, you know, I want to say, my heart goes out to the family. I'm praying for them. On another note, Ms. Simster, I want to say thank you for your presentation and the way you laid out your line items. It's a refreshing change than what we used to have. So thank you for that, and everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, too, would like to thank everybody for being here. I see some members of the press and some officials, and we'll acknowledge them shortly. And I think you'll hear some more about this, but we all are grieved about the tragedy in Eden of the past week, and there will never, ever be a full resolution of that situation. So our hearts and prayers do go out to those families and individuals involved. But, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recognize an individual named Tom Alderman, who passed away June the 12th after a long battle with cancer. For many years, he served on our Senior Citizens Board. He served on the Dan Valley Missionary Baptist Executive Board. He was chairman of our Planning Board for the elderly here for a long time. He was very active in one of my favorite charities, the Gideon's Bible, and the Madison Aid Army Camp, serving that. Over the years, he organized quite a few fundraisers for the benefit of our citizenry, the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, the American Cancer Society, and for the leukemia and lymphoma societies. This board honored Mr. Alderman last January, and quite rightly so, for his long and very excellent help. And I would hold up Tom Alderman as an example for all citizens in this county, and our hearts go out to the family of Tom Alderman. We will be missing a very important citizen. So our recognition goes out again to Tom Alderman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Perdle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like my colleagues, we had an unthinkable tragedy occur last week in our county on Dan River. And our thoughts and prayers are with the victims, the survivors, and their families. We also need to remember in thought and prayer all those public safety workers from within our community, from within our region, and across the state that worked tirelessly since that tragedy. But we also, we need to thank all the churches and the nonprofits and the county citizens that stepped up to provide the support to the families, to the victims, to the survivors, as well as the safety, public safety personnel. This was a tragedy that we, some of us, most of us can't imagine happening. And just please, when you go to bed tonight, remember those, those families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Perdle. Commissioner Berger?
A few folks in the crowd want to recognize Tony Reese, Bonnie Purgson, and Ophelia Wright, all with our Board of Elections. Certainly appreciate y'all being here tonight. And just to echo a few of the comments you've heard, Mr. Tom Alderman was certainly someone that'll be missed, did a lot of work here in Rockingham County. It's hard to replace people like that, and we certainly appreciate all of his years of service. And then as far as the tragedy, anytime you lose a family member or friend in a sudden tragic event, it is very difficult and just hard to get through. Certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with those family members that have survived, and with the friends, the rescue teams. It is just something that you never get over. You just try to cope, and so certainly our thoughts and prayers are with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. I just have a couple of things. I'd like to thank the committee working on the UDO tonight. Paul Sinowitz is here, Charles Rakestar is here, Jean Robertson is also a member of that board, and Kevin Berger and myself, along with staff. So thank you guys very much for the hours and hours that you've put into this. We appreciate it, and so we look forward to bringing that to you in July. And much like all the other Commissioners, with this tragedy, it's just, there's, I don't know how you would comfort anybody other than to say, our prayers extend to you, our condolences. And with that, I'll say good night. We will be going into closed session for the items mentioned before. Approved closed session minutes, consult with attorney, and negotiating agents. I do not anticipate further business once we come out of closed session. So with that being said, we will entertain a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. We are in closed session.